If we could all find our seats, everyone? We're gonna start the meeting. Just want to welcome everybody to the December 1st, 2022 Barnstable Town Council Meeting. I do need to ask if anybody's recording the meeting, and if so, please make yourself known. I'm not seeing any. I do not have to make all those other announcements because we are in person. So, instead of via Zoom, so it's good to see everybody and be together. And at this point, can we do roll call, please?
Counselors, Atsalus.
Here, here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullum. Cusack.
Here.
Rap Crisetti.
President.
Leveque.
Here.
Ludkey.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Neary.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
That's 12.
Thank you. If we could all please rise, we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance, and then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for a public comment, and I think it's appropriate that we do the in-person public comment first. Is anybody in the audience that would like to come up to the stand? Put your name down, sign in, and you would have three minutes for public comment.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Dagwone, resident of Hyannis, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Zion Union Heritage Museum, hoping that my fellow counselors will support the effort that I put forth about almost 10 years ago when I wasn't a counselor, and I came up here as a community member wanting to support the recognition of many of our residents in my community of color, particularly Cape Verdeans, African Americans, who have been very strong in this community. And we had a church that had been here over 100 years, which was up for sale for almost two years to be purchased, and it was not purchased. And I approached the council at that time, asking them to recognize the fact that it was a historical building in the town of Hyannis, but also the town of, also the village of Hyannis, but also the town of Barnstable, and that they look at it very closely in terms of having a way to recognize us and keep us in the history here. Many of our Cape Verdean residents have been well, you know, been seaworthy and have lived here and have shaped this town and this community in so many ways. And it was the last thing in the community that was being dispersed. And I remember when I left home, my husband says, "Well, you know, they may not like your idea, so don't get upset about it." But I said, "You know, it's just worth going up and at least trying." You know, if you don't put it out there, you don't know what people are gonna feel about it. I know how I felt. I know how the community felt, and so I came down with that on my shoulders. And the council and the town manager at the time liked the idea and contacted our town council, who was Harold Toby at the time, and he contacted me the next day, said they liked the idea of the museum. They'd like to talk with you about it. So that's sort of how it was established. It's very dear to my heart, and I could not not come down tonight and express how it all began and the importance of supporting this. I recently, several months ago, contacted Lynn Poyant, almost in tears, saying, "Lynn, I don't want to, I'm off the council. I don't want to see this, this museum," which had been established to fall into blight. And she acted properly by getting me all the people that needed to come over and take a look at it. And when they did, they saw what was happening and began to, you know, just jot down some of the things that that we could do, the town could do to help us to keep this going. And so I'm here tonight asking my counselors and those in the town who were there at the time to continue to support this very special museum that represents a segment of this community that most people don't hear a lot about. And it's been successful. We want to continue. It's growing in size. It's growing in recognition. And so I'd ask that you give it some support when it comes up on the agenda next month. Thank you. Or later this month.
Hello. My name is Ralph Dagwone. I'm also supporting Zion Union Heritage Museum. I'm kind of honored that I'm the one of the point persons there, because I do the maintenance and stuff. So if anybody needs to, one of the counselors want to come and give me a call, I'll give you a personal tour, if you like. But I'm also honored because I came from, I'm like 70 years old. I'm probably the oldest person that's in that neighborhood now that originally I came from, you know, right from the Cape Cod Hospital right there. So I'm a native there. Also, I'm Native American. It's part of me, too, and that was part of the neighborhood, too. So that's part of the museum also. So we got Cape Verdeans, the African Americans, and we got Cape Wampanoags in there also. But my, I remember my grandmother had actually taken me to that church, when it was a church. So that's how far back I go. And the old name for that neighborhood was Happy Hollow. I don't know if you ever heard that, but that was the old name for it. And we had like four, this was like four blocks that were in there, and it got rezoned multiple times. And we had a lot of affordable housing there, which is not there no more. There's only two or three houses. Me and my wife's house is one of them that's remaining there. Between bone scenes, projects, and the car dealerships, all that's gone. So we pretty much only have the museum. And, and there's a lot of people that came up through, through that neighborhood that you all know and respect. And so the other thing I would like to say, that we do a lot of things at the museum that people, that we could do once we get it more established, is that you can do small weddings, you know? People have, can't afford a big wedding or something, you could do a little wedding, because we're at the chapel there. We got a little reception hall downstairs. You could do, you know, we had all kind of little, little things like that you can do there. So, you know, it's, it's a lot of things we could do for the community, and we never shut anybody out. So anybody can, can come there and, and do an activity. Yeah. So I thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Rhodes, and I'm a resident of Falmouth, but I am the treasurer for the Zion Union Heritage Museum. And I was newly appointed this past summer. And it's been something that's been near and dear to my heart in ways that I never comprehended. I work as an employment counselor. And one of the placements we have for the youth that we have that summer jobs for is the Zion Union Heritage Museum. Before the COVID pandemic occurred, we had a monthly youth event where we had kids who were talented with poetry, with rap, with music, coming in and having just a fun afternoon of just playing and sharing their talents with everyone. We had kids that were coming as far as New Bedford. If you think about what it takes to get an adult to drive a New Bedford person to Hyannis, it was really growing. And I, and I think kids are really looking forward to having this established. So I wanted to really encourage you to, to, yes, do good work for the Zion Museum. Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Good evening, everyone. I just want to take a moment to introduce myself to the council. My name is Rob GalliBois. I am the district attorney -elect for the Cape and Islands District. My wife Nikki and I and our two sons are residents of the town of Barnstable. We presently live in Counselor Starr's jurisdiction, and I say presently because we recently purchased a home in Counselor Clark's jurisdiction. So we'll be over in West Barnstable shortly, and we're looking forward to that. I am looking forward to a growing relationship between my office and this council. I wanted to let each of you know that next week you'll be receiving, each of you will be receiving an invitation to join us for my swearing-in. It's going to be on January 4th at 10:00 a.m. over at the Cape Cod Community College at the Tilden Arts Center. And a very special guest, if you will, Supreme Judicial Court Associate Justice Serge Georges will be performing the swearing-in ceremony. So again, thank you for giving me a moment to introduce myself. And again, I'm looking forward to a growing relationship. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is William Hedley Smith. I am a Hyannis resident. I'm not gonna tell me how many years, because I don't want to give away my age. I know a lot of you people from just being here for so long, and either your dad or going on down the line, but I'll get to my point. I'm coming to you today with a very serious and heavy heart. I've been advised by a lot of people who are dealing with this problem of dumping nuclear waste into Cape Cod Bay. There has been many, many friends of mine, grassroots organizations, Downwind and all that stuff, who have been fighting these people for decades. And I wanted to let you know that that Gulf Stream that takes us from the Labrador Current comes all the way down here, and it comes flying by Pilgrim, and the first place it hits is Barnstable. We are dealing with people who basically bought this Pilgrim power plant for $1,000 and thought they were gonna make a lot of money with the billion-dollar grant they got to clean up the project. Well, it's my understanding, being a businessman, that sometimes you get in over your head. And sometimes you realize that just to transport nuclear waste from here to the federal site in Utah costs millions and millions of dollars. It was purchased for a money-making plot in the first place. There's nothing I love more than Cape Cod and you people in this town. I've been here and I've served it as a coach and a citizen for many, many years. We need the support of all the councils on the Cape to take this pledge seriously, to be able to write to our congressmen, and to write to our senators, this is not gonna happen. There are federal laws in place that supersede any law that was in place when Pilgrim was established back in the 1970s. This isn't a project where we can afford to say, "Oops, sorry." This is something that is as deadly as anything in the world, and oil spend is a gentle pat on the back compared to what we're talking about here. Nuclear waste in any way, shape, or form could affect our food chain, our citizens, our children, our livelihood, the economy of all Cape Cod if there was to be an accident. And the way it's being dealt with now has nothing to do with you. I am begging you to please find a way to either have a public posting of a petition that all the voters can sign, and along with your guidance, send up to those people. I am sure you'll be overwhelmed by the amount of people who want to pledge themselves to do something about this. We're not at the point in time right now that we can afford to be lax. I said to my dear friend over there, hindsight is for idiots. We cannot let this go on. We have to do something about it. And I'm asking the people who I vote for to be the voice of the people who you protect. We've run out of time. It has to be done now. It has to be a priority. There's nothing that I've ever seen on Cape Cod that's more of a priority now than to save this country. That's how we're gonna do it. Thank you so much, and I hope you can help us.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Helen Chatel. I'm from Cape Media Center. I currently reside in West Dennis, grew up in Western Mass. I just wanted to take my time tonight to introduce myself as a new executive director over at Cape Media. I have met with Barnstable's Channel 18 facility people, Sarah Beal and Paula Hershey. And just the other day, I met with Mark Millen. And so I'm looking forward to all the great things that I can do to help Barnstable, the community, all the villages. I look forward to it. I've already received a welcome, a lot of welcome from the community and support. I've attended a few chamber events, and I'm excited to hit the ground running. Hopefully, we'll bring back Cape Media news. I'm looking forward to that. I think it's very important, especially with the loss of newspapers. And, you know, we don't get a lot of coverage unless it's something bad here on the Cape. And I think there's a lot of good on the Cape, and I really want to bring that and show that. And I think it's really important to bring a sense of community to, to people nowadays. So thank you. And I look forward to meeting you all.
Thanks, Helen. Welcome. Anybody else in the room that would like to speak in public comment before I move on to our remote participants? Okay. Do we have anybody?
We do. We have Cheryl Powell. Cheryl, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Hi, Cheryl. Welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. I wasn't aware that it was going to be in the actual town hall tonight, but I'm glad to see that's actually happening. But you wouldn't want my cough, anyway. You have an item on your agenda. By the way, good evening to everybody, and thank you for hearing me. You have an item on your agenda tonight from the Appointments Committee with regard to Ms. Laura Cronin applying for the Hyannis Main Street and Waterfront Historic District Commission, otherwise known as the HHDC. I apologize to Laura that I wasn't there when she was at the Appointments Committee. I had a business meeting that I also had to attend that I could not get out of. But I wanted to make sure I appear tonight to let the town counselors, who she's coming before for the first reading, to know that I think that this is a fabulous individual. She's dedicated to the town. And to let you know that as chairman of the HHDC, I give her at least my full support. I know you have a lengthy agenda tonight, but I did want to voice that. And I'm hoping that soon, you know, God willing, that we'll be able to welcome another valued member of the HHDC and start filling out those positions with people who are very dedicated and very versed and very willing to fulfill those roles. Thank you again to the members, and I hope everyone, everyone else as well.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate you being with us. And I would mirror your comments about Ms. Cronin.
That is all we have for public comment.
Okay. Thank you so much. Director Poyant, is there any council response to public comment? Look to my right. Look into my left. I'm sorry. Counsel Rap Crisetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just very, very good to see former Counselor Dagwone here. And Ralph, good to see you. And I absolutely will be supporting the Zion item when it comes forward. Thank you for, for all your hard work with regards to the Zion. I know it's a very critical part of your community, of our community, and I wouldn't want to see it waste away. So thank you for that. And congratulations to our district attorney. I'm not sure if I'll make your swearing-in, but I'm sure you'll, I'm sure you'll have plenty of support for that. And thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rap Crisetti. Anybody else on this side? Counsel Ludkey.
Thank you. I also wanted to speak to the folks who were speaking about the Zion Church, and especially taken by how you talked about the neighborhood. I remember the houses that were there. They were affordable homes. I know exactly the one you're talking about. I drive by. It's like, how is that still there? I think it's so sad that that beautiful church that means so much is just surrounded, you know, by this, this development that has overtaken a neighborhood that used to be there. And I remember the pink house on the corner that's now a parking lot. And it, that, it just, it's so sad. So absolutely my support for that. It's, it's such an important part of the community. We need to do everything we can to, to raise it up and, and, you know, keep it there and do what we can to protect it.
Thank you, Counsel Ludkey. Counsel Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Leveque. I wanted to say to the Dagwones and also to Lynn Wood, I too support this appropriation. It's great to hear that history of our town. I had never heard the area was called Happy Hollow. I too am a Cape Cod hospital baby, so I definitely want to take you up on that tour. And I'd love to go and see it. I've never been there. Attorney GalliBois, thank you so much for coming and introducing yourself to us, and congratulations to you. Mr. Smith, I could not agree more about the danger of this being dumped into our bay. I think I've said it here before in front of the council. I have zero faith in the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, so I will be on this like white on rice. Helen, thanks so much for coming in and introducing yourself to us. I'm the former board chair of the Media Center, and I just want to remind all of our constituents that this is your public access television station. So if you want to produce content and you want your content to be shown on the air, the Media Center is open to all residents of the town of Barnstable, and I want to remind you all of that. And then Cheryl Powell, thank you for being always such a supportive chair of one of our committees. You do a great job, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Shaughnessy. Anybody else on this side? Before we go to my left, anybody else on this? Counsel Starr, please.
Thank you, President Leveque. I just wanted to speak quickly to what Hedley Smith was saying. We, we, we have, as a, as a town council, we have passed a resolution, you know, and sent it to Markey and everybody about not dumping water in Cape Cod Bay. It's, it's tough, you know? They, they won't, they won't give us the test, the water test. We don't really know what's in the water. If there's anything to do with, with radioactive materials at all, I have a daughter who works for ARC, Aquaculture Research Corporation, and she was in, in Europe recently on a, you know, a trade know, a trade mission, talking about selling oysters to Europe. And if they ever got wind that there was radioactive water anywhere near, they would shut, shut down the whole industry and all the exports that we were looking forward to. So aquaculture is a big business. In Barnstable Harbor, we take five million oysters out a year. You know, if you figure 55 cents a piece, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a local, strong industry. So anything we can do to maintain it and make our opinions known would be great. So maybe at the next meeting, we can have another resolution if need be. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Starr. And just to, I wrote that letter myself after the resolution was passed, and we mailed that out, and I signed it myself. And I will, I can say that I will do more research and that there's new information out there that we can address, or if it needs to be resent with after elections, I will make sure that that happens. You're welcome. And I agree with your points. It's a, again, it's, it's just the, the idea, first of all and foremost, that, that it needs to get addressed, and again, because our, our livelihood depends on it. Council Clark, did you have your hands up? Okay.
No, but I do echo the economic driver that the aquaculture and shellfish industry, that the aquaculture and shellfish industry is in our town, and maybe it is time for another letter to just reinforce what Council Starr's point is. I appreciate that, especially since it's in the newspaper.
Thank you. Any other council comment? I just want to thank everybody, also, I'm sorry, Vice President Schnapp, you did have your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, just wanted to echo some of my fellow councilors' support for the Zion Museum, a true treasure that we have in our town, and love hearing more about the history and definitely want to also take up your offer on the tour. And welcome, Helen. It's, it's a fabulous organization. Many years ago, it was part of a number of productions there, and it's, again, such a valuable resource for us to have here. And Mr. Smith, thank you for bringing that sense of urgency about this issue. I mean, those of us who have followed what has happened recently in the media know that we probably need to raise our voices individually, if not collectively, because it feels like they're just going to go forward with something that most of us are opposed to. So I, I think we should not hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnapp. Anybody else? I just wanted to say it's great to see you, Council Dagwan and Ralph and Lynn. Appreciate you being with us. And you mentioned that a drive from New Bedford to here to Hyannis. I know that well. I'm from New Bedford originally, so, and it is, it is quite a hike. And I'm also very much aware of the Cape Vernon history of New Bedford, especially around where Route 18 is downtown and things of that nature and, and the culture there. And that's where I was first introduced to that. So I do have an appreciation for that, and I look forward to, obviously, tonight is just the first reading of that item. We won't be necessarily discussing or, but feel free to come back on the 15th. We will be having a public hearing in regards to that. So just wanted to say thank you for being with us, and I look forward to speaking about it more on the 15th. Anybody else? Okay. I just want to say thank you to everybody, and again, congratulations, District Attorney -elect, Rob Gallois. No, Gallois. That's how the French Canadians say it. I have a right to say that. So, so anyway, so I just want to say thank you for being with us, and it's good to be, good to see you again, and congratulations on, and best of luck with your new home. So with that, that would wrap up public comment, and now it would be time for Town Manager Communications. I'd like to welcome Town Manager Mark Els to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. This is my Town Manager's Report for the period of November 18 through December 1. Before I begin, President Levesque, I've asked Attorney McLaughlin to look into the regulatory aspects relevant to Pilgrim and what's going on so that he can brief you and through you to the council. So as you move forward relevant to this issue, maybe that'll help you frame better the type of action you might take.
Yes, please. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
He's, he's already going to proceed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First on my agenda, Director Elizabeth Jenkins from our Planning and Development Department will provide an update on our local comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Town Manager Els. Good evening, councilors. Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development, here to provide your monthly update on our process to update our local comprehensive plan. Just a big picture look and a reminder of the effort that goes into updating the plan. These are the required elements of a local comprehensive plan, and the ones in blue are the ones that we are actively working on presently. The formulation of a vision statement, which really is a growth policy, a long-range growth policy for the town of Barnstable, as well as an evaluation of existing conditions. And concurrently with these efforts, we are proceeding to update our housing production plan. So again, the outreach that we have been conducting, we are underway with an extensive community engagement effort, both to help inform and evaluate the existing community conditions and progress of prior plans, and again, put together this vision statement that will express the shared values of our community for future growth and development as well as resource protection. The next step in this outreach is a winter open house. We would like to invite all of you to the Hyannis Youth and Community Center on December 14th from four to seven, just to engage with planning staff as well as the LCPC members on some of the processes that we've been going through. We'll have interactive activities for people of all ages and just hope everybody can drop by and share a little time with us to help inform our local comprehensive plan. So in addition to this in-person event, we have been working with our civic associations. There were a number of civic associations that have been meeting on Zoom, so we've been following up with those to make sure we get in-person meetings in all of our seven Our big outreach effort right now is currently the survey. We encourage you all to visit barnstablelcp.com and take the survey. Thank you to the help of our fantastic communications team. You'll see it right there on the front homepage, so very easy to find that link and connect with it. I believe you all got an email today inviting you to take the survey and to share it in your newsletters and with your connections, so we very much appreciate your support in helping us, us spread the word. I also want to say thanks to Superintendent Sarah Hearn, who sent that out to all of our school students today, so that went out to 5,795 people today with the help of the Barnstable Public Schools. So thank you very much to them. Also, take a look at our community comment walls. If you're out and about and you see one, just a great way to leave some comments on a visual map about the favorite things that you love about Barnstable. You can access those online as well. And just a brief update on the housing production plan. Thank you to the great council support we had last night at the Housing Production Plan Forum. We went over some draft goals and strategies and got feedback on how the community felt about those. We'll continue drafting those plan, that plan. It'll go back to the Housing Committee and then to a joint meeting of Housing Committee and Planning Board before it comes here to council. So stay in touch. Again, we encourage everybody to take the survey, review the calendar of engagement opportunities. I'm sure you will see Planning and Development staff out at all of the winter strolls, handing out our postcards. So again, take a look at us there, sign up for the newsletter. Our next meeting is, of the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee, is next week, December 8th, here at Town Hall at 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you leave the podium, just while you're here, does anybody have any questions or comments for Director Jenkins?
I do, thank you.
Council Clark, please.
I appreciate that, and thank you for the expertise last night at the Housing Production Forum. What is the timeline for that? So when, when are you expecting to wrap that up? Because it looks to me like that's in a tighter, tighter timeframe than the LCP.
It is. We do want to move forward. Again, the housing production plan is a state-prescribed process, and we do have a plan that expires at the beginning of next year, so we hope to have a final deliverable on the housing production plan, January, February timeframe. You're welcome.
Thank you, Council Clark. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thanks for the update. Town Manager Els, please.
Thank you, Director Jenkins, and again, Mark Els, Town Manager. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2024, so we're actively in budget again here, focusing at this point on our capital improvement plan. Those, those proposed projects were, were submitted by staff on November 7, and we conducted an internal review of those on the 28th, so we're on, on schedule with our Budget Action Calendar. And we'll continue to proceed there. We'll be starting up operating budget probably late, later December, be certainly the next part of, first part of next year. A public hearing was held on November 15 at 11 for proposed changes to various Town of Barnstable permits and program fees that take effect on January 1 of next calendar year, as well as proposed taxi meter rate increases for taxis licensed to operate within the Town of Barnstable again. These would be rates that would be effective on January 1, 2023. You can view it on our town website, the hearing, that is. You can find the proposed fees on the Town Manager's website under Fees. We continue to take public comment through December 14th. So certainly, I have received comment, and I expect that I will continue to receive comment. And all of this information, again, both the fees, proposed fees, and our budgets are found on our website. On Wednesday, December 7 at 2:00 p.m. here in this room, the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Mike Kenealy, will be visiting Town Hall to celebrate this year's Community Planning Grant Award recipients included in this year's round of Community One Stop for Growth. And I've been asked to join the secretary in the program as Barnstable is a grant recipient. So always enjoyable to see Secretary Kenealy. On June 1 of this year, Town of Barnstable was informed of regulatory revisions the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection was developing to ensure that timely action, actions are taken to restore and protect coastal estuaries that have been impacted by excessive nitrogen pollution. The DEP will conduct three hearings, one of which will be an in-person and remote hearing here in Barnstable Town Hall on December 5 at 6:00 p.m., so next Monday. Comments on proposed revisions may be presented orally at the public hearing, and you can find additional information at the links that I've provided in my Town Manager update. I've also provided you links to the two areas of regulatory change that are proposed. And for the viewing public, you can find my Town Manager updates on the Tom Hinniger website, and you can access all of this information as well, as well as the attachments that I provide the council. On November 30, staff and the Chair of our Board of Health met to discuss the proposed changes in Title V and agreed to prepare a unified written comment on these changes. We also agreed that the Town Manager would present oral testimony on December 5, and the final written comment that we would put forward would reflect the testimony and any additional comments or information that followed the DEP hearing. And those written comments are due on December 16th. So we'll keep you advised as this progresses. I do know that the Chair of the Board of Health and Tom Lee from the Board of Health expect to attend the Town Council meeting on the 15th, and the next day will be the day that those written comments are due. I'll share the draft letter with you all prior to that. I already have a first draft, but we're wanting to get, there's two sections of, of this proposed change, one related to nitrogen-sensitive areas, the other related to more generally Title V. And so Director Santos has already provided me those comments on the nitrogen-sensitive areas and really how this may impact how we proceed with our comprehensive wastewater management plan. The Board of Health is looking more at the general Title V impacts, but it impacts both, so. And we want to make sure that that unified response is reflective of both. We continue to review the permits filed with regulatory agencies regarding the proposed Phase III Commonwealth Wind project, which is proposing to land cable in Barnstable, specifically at, in the Doses Beach area. On September 30, 2022, Commonwealth Wind proceeded with filing an environmental notification form and supporting documents to the Mass Environmental Protection Agency Office. And on November 28, we submitted our written comments that we do on the 29th on that ENF that was filed with MEPA, and I've attached those comments for you all to take a look at. They'll be available if the public would as well attach to this document. There are also, they also, all comments will be available on the MEPA site, because that's really the official place that anybody who's interested in this should look, and also look for all comments that have been made, because I'm certain there'll be many. And just for everybody's better understanding, the ENF is really our opportunity to comment on areas that we believe the EIR, which is the next document that they'll be producing relevant to this, the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act. You know, the ENF, number one makes, helps to make a determination relevant to whether categorically they need to proceed with an EIR, which they do, and I believe they even state that in the ENF. But more specifically, it helps to scope out what they'll be addressing in the EIR. So a lot of people, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Environmental Impact Report. Sorry. Thank you. I don't like acronyms either, so thank you. Thank you. Yes. So a lot of people have given me very direct comment, and though it's appreciated, really what we're trying to do right now is make sure that when they have to go forward with the next step, that we, that everything's addressed that, that we collectively want to see. Okay? So. So we'll continue to keep you updated on this as we proceed, giving you the links again both to the report that was filed and the MEPA site within my Town Manager's report. I have not commenced any further discussions with Commonwealth Wind relevant to a host community agreement as we're preparing kind of the base information. I wanted to see our comments on the ENF, which we just put in this week. There's, there's title research being done relevant to some of the issues in the project, and so I want to make sure that I go in there with a sound base. I do expect that they'll be reaching out to me, looking to meet, but I'll let you know step by step as that discussion progresses. Finally, and I hope good news, not that any of the other isn't, the 28th session of Inside of Town of Barnstable Government, a Citizens Leadership Academy, will begin on Tuesday, January 24, 2023. So that's exciting. We get our public back in, we get our citizens back in here in person to, to meet us and to see what we do every day and to engage with us. Very, I was a director way back when we started this, and it was one of the more exciting opportunities to interact with our public, hands-on, and a great opportunity, encourage people to participate in this. The academy is a 12-week commitment with the goal of educating the citizens of Barnstable about operations of town government while also obtaining valuable feedback and participation from those citizens participating in the academy. The program is designed to advance understanding of The program is designed to advance understanding of and participation in civic affairs, as well as to increase awareness of the challenges facing municipal government. Inside Barnstable Town Government began in 2003. To date, over 800 Barnstable residents and employees have participated in the program. Classes will be on Tuesday evenings, 6:30 to 9:00, and will be held in various locations throughout the town. We like our residents to come and see where we work, and we get to show them in each respective area what we do and how we do it. The classes will be conducted by town staff and provide interactive learning experiences, group discussions, and site tours. The program is free of charge and open to anybody who resides or works in the Town of Barnstable. Class size is limited, so please register early to avoid a waiting list. And you can find those applications in the Town Managers' office or on our website. So please take a look. We've had a lot of discussion going into this. The intent was a face-to-face, personal interaction with our residents. You know, too many types of government aren't that. We are. We're boots on the ground. We serve face-to-face with those people we live in Barnstable with. Very successful program. We are talking with Director Poyant about how for those of our community that like remote over, you know, face-to-face, how we can continue to communicate with them. So we will have a, it won't be this program, but we are going to continue to use that opportunity. But we're not looking to do some sort of a hybrid. This is face-to-face. Okay? So that'll be your opportunity if you want to go that route, and we're going to have other opportunities. So I thought I'd share that. I've had that question from a lot of people. That concludes my Town Manager report. So if there's any aspect of it you'd like to ask questions of?
I'll look to my left first this time. Council Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And thank you very much, Town Manager Ellis, for your comprehensive report. When, I know that the inside-town government is very popular. So when it's full, is there a place that the public can go to say, "Class is full"?
Let me talk with my staff. I believe they accept at a, I thought I had the number here on the class size. Lynn, do you know off the top? Is it 20 this time?
We are reducing the size this year because of COVID concerns. So it'll be 20 to 25, and there is a waiting list that's taken. That's standard practice that the facilitators do every session, because conflicts come up.
So, yeah, so they will know, but then we can hold them from the waiting list, and if they can participate the next time.
Sure. So this will be found on the Town Managers' web?
Yes. Yeah, and I gave you the link right in there.
I see that, for the public.
Yes, thank you. Yes. And in our office, too, if you.
Anybody else on the side, on the left, my left? I'm looking to my other left, over here on the right. Council Rafficetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for the report. I took that course, and I learned so much. And I encourage anybody, if you haven't taken the class, it's a great way to expose yourself to all the departments within the town and maybe even find some future volunteers for our committees or even on the council here. So I encourage you. Will the Police Academy be starting up again? Because I really want to take that one, and I was locked out of it before.
I know the chief is back there, so do you just want an affirmative not? Chief, why don't you come up? Because if the answer's no, I want him to answer.
Okay.
Evening, Chief Sonnen. We are talking about it right now. The people that were running it have retired and left over the course of COVID, so we're going to have to rebuild the program. And if we do restart it, it's probably going to be late winter, early spring. We're going to run an abbreviated program with a smaller class size, much less the inside-town government is going to be doing. But we do intend on bringing it back.
That's great. Super. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about that?
Thank you, Council Rafficetti. Council Shaughnessy, please.
I just want to second Counselor Rafficetti's comments. I have taken both academies. Both were fabulous. I learned so much. And so I'd encourage any and all residents to do it. And they gave away some really cool schwag as well, and I still have my DPW t-shirt.
Collect this item. Anybody else like to comment on Town Manager report? Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mark, for the very comprehensive report. The letter that came out of the Office of Town Attorney on the ENF, or there's so many acronyms, but on the Commonwealth Wind farm, is that a public document?
It is, yes.
Where did you say that might be available?
Well, I attached it. It'll be attached to this report on the Town Managers' website under Town Managers' Reports. But the official place you should be looking at all comment letters is on the MIPA website, relevant to that proposed project, and that link's here, too.
Okay.
Okay?
Because we know that there's been a lot of concern from a number of our residents about this proposed entry onto Douses Beach. And I think it really shows that we are critical of a number of aspects of it and that, you know, we're not shy to share those views through this process. Critical, I meant in terms of not negative, but looking at the reality of what's being proposed.
Well, I think it's important to state that we are not the proponent of this project and that we are a community where this is being proposed. And much like any proposal, we will review this comprehensively and in the best interest of Barnstable. So I think it's important to say that, because I have received many comments, and it isn't always apparent in those comments that that is what we are doing. I also made a video, so if anybody wants to watch it.
It's a great video.
I would encourage you all to watch it.
Very informative. I didn't mean to interrupt. Did you have, okay. Any other comment?
I just, I have one.
Counsel Atzus, please.
Just to follow up on Counsel Schnepp's comments related to the letter that was sent, you know, on behalf of the town regarding Commonwealth Wind. I've said this before about the misinformation train. This is just another example of where you go to get the correct, accurate information, not from folks who have an agenda, who want to paint everything that's being done in our community, decisions that we're making up here as being anything other than the best interest of our community. So for those watching, I would hope that you'll read this letter and show that we do have your best interest at heart and concern. We do listen, and just watch out for that misinformation train. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Atzus. And just to add to that, I just think that's important, too, because of our last meeting, that we approved your ability to negotiate the host community agreement, possible host community agreement with Commonwealth Wind, and again, moving that forward. But this is all part of these conversations that take place that we planned on doing all along, and we want to have honest dialogue. And it's important to show our concerns, and again, that letter shows that we do have concerns. And we're not just going to, like I said, be a proponent. We're neutral on it. And we are here to be convinced otherwise. Until that point, we move forward. So thank you. Appreciate that, and I appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Schnep, please, if you could help me with the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two sets of minutes tonight. The first is. Thank you. I'll start again. We have two sets of minutes tonight. The first are the notes that have been put in minute form from our strategic planning session held on October 13th. And the second session is from our meeting held on November 17th. So I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the meeting held on October 13th, 2022.
Give it a second. If you're first and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a scrupulous error in the attendance. I was not able to attend that meeting.
Okay. If we could strike that. Any other discussion? Very good. Town Clerk Ann Quirk is on the case. Any other discussion? Okay. Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please. Is this something, do I need a roll call on this? Okay. So if we can all just signify our approval by raising a hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moves forward. Thank you.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes of the Town Council meeting held on November 17th, 2022.
First and a second. And is there any discussion regards to this item? Okay, not seeing any. If I could grant your approval once again by raising a hand and signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. And now it is time for Council Communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Council Clark, please. Kick us off.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And I'd like to congratulate President Levesque for receiving, being selected for the Rosenthal Award for the Human Rights Commission, and also recognition for the Unsung Hero Award for former Counsel Deborah Dagewan and former Counsel Paul Hebert, as well as Michael Messinas from the Town of Barnstable. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It's an honor. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. It's a great honor. Thank you. Any other? Counsel, yes. Counsel Shaughnessy, please.
I just wanted to mention quickly that today, this week's Love Live Local Holiday Market Boat Parade has been moved to Sunday instead of Saturday due to the weather. We're expecting Saturday. So just want to let anyone know who's planning to attend. It is now happening on Sunday, this Sunday.
Thank you. Yep. Move, rain, rain on, just proactive, and they just moved it from Saturday to Sunday. Thank you. What is up with the rain on the Hyannis Stroll? Right, that's a good point. Anybody else? Counsel Rafficetti, please.
Well, I haven't heard from Katuit Civic, but I think Katuits is still on. Santa's going to arrive by boat, but I guess Santa and Katuit, he'll brave the elements and do it, so. It'll be Saturday by boat at Town Dock. He comes about 3:15, 3:30.
Very good. Maybe Santa will ask for a reprieve for the rain for a little bit. Anybody else? I know, since nobody from Centerville is saying it, there is a stroll, so at Centerville. Centerville Stroll, I believe it starts at 3:00 o'clock?
It's 3:00 to 6:00 on the 11th of December.
So it is the time for strolling here in the Town of Barnstable. And I believe the following, I believe the, I don't know what day of the week it is, I'm sorry. That would be the 7th? Is that Wednesday? Yes, it is. That would be Barnstable Village's stroll, which is also a lot of fun, Barnstable Village. And the Osterville Stroll is on the 9th. Oh, yep, is on the 9th. So want to make sure that we get all the strolls, and we don't want to discriminate against any of the stroll. It gets very competitive. Oh, and I know there's something going on West Barnstable. Counsel Clark's all over that. Go ahead, Counsel Clark. It's okay.
The annual West Barnstable Village tree lighting is on Sunday at 5:00. And there are secular carols outside, and then church carols on the inside with the Christmas story. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, too, outside the Christmas strolls, just to get an early jump, if anybody would like to come, it's an event that I personally attend every year, is the lighting of the menorah at the Cape Cod Mall. And actually, Hanukkah is later this year than probably the most years. And I contacted, I actually called today and spoke to Rabbi Shabbat Lubavitch of Cape Cod. And he said it's going to be normally on a Sunday, but because it's so close to the Christmas season, they've asked him to move it to the Monday. So it's going to be Monday, the 19th. I'm not quite sure what time. It's usually around 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM. And there'll be an official announcement, and there usually is an email. I asked him to make sure he gets the email out to Cynthia so that she can get it all to the councilors, but that's a good time. I think Counsel Mendes and I went last year. And so, there's Lot Keys and incredible donuts right from New York City, too. So just if that motivates you, so be it. So Counsel Clark?
Thank you, President Levesque. I do want to thank the Town of Barnstable for all their support. I know that they string the lights in West Barnstable and as well as support the strolls around. So I thank the staff for supporting these activities around town.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. And it really is, it really is the most wonderful time of the year here on Cape Cod and specifically Barnstable. So anybody else? Announcements? Counsel Atzus, please. Share with us.
I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things, examples of the community and the town working together, as well as other entities as well. So Aaron Crosby Park in Centerville, which is where the split is, where if you bear a left, you go to South Main Street. If you stay to the right, you're going Main Street towards Mother's Park. That sign that was there for a long time was knocked down. A car hit it. So it's been down for quite a while. A resident from town, Bernie Lebo, who owns a company called Sign Works, he's a resident of Centerville, he offered to replace that sign. He built a new sign with coordination with DPW. They, he reinstalled the sign there, so now the Aaron Crosby Park sign is there. He also did the sign out by the church in Counsel Neary's area as well. He also repaired and replaced that sign that's out there by Oak Street. So I just want to acknowledge Mr. Lebo for volunteering his time, effort, and ultimately money to replace that sign gratis, and I just want to thank him publicly. The other thing that's happening down at Aaron Crosby Park, for a number of years, some residents have wanted to get the large pine tree there lit up for the holidays. Biggest challenge was there's no electricity there to power it. So DPW, working with Eversource, we had to wait for Eversource to put the power in there. But now there's a meter. Power is there. And through the coordinations of residents Aaron Webb and Michelle McCoy, with Avengrid Patrick Johnson purchasing lights for the tree, and DPW getting a bucket truck out there, hopefully sometime in the next few days, they'll be putting lights up on that large pine tree there at Aaron Crosby Park. So just wanted to put that out there as just an example of community working together with the town and other business entities to get some positive things done. You know, little things mean a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Atzus. Any other Counsel communications? Okay. Not seeing any at this point in time. We just normally would take a quick little break. So it is, I see 8:08 on the clock here. If we could come back within five minutes and take a little break, and we'll be right back. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Just want to welcome everybody back to our Barnstable Town Council meeting, December 1st, 2022. Before we go into the orders of the day, the next item, I believe, a couple of councils need to recuse themselves.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. I need to recuse myself from this item 22-144. I will shut off my microphone and...
Mr. President, I'm also recusing myself from item number 2022-144.
Mr. President, I am recusing myself on item 2022-144.
Mr. President, I'm recusing myself from item number 2022-144.
Thank you, Councilor Rapkis, Councilor Shaughnessy, Councilor Atzalas, and Councilor Neary. And because four councils are recused from item number 2022-144 and another councillor is absent, we do not have the quorum tonight for this item. And since items 2022-145 and item number 2022-146 are related to that item, I'm opening and continuing items 2022-144, 2022-145, and item number 2022-146 to individual public hearings to be held on each item at the town council meeting on January 5th, 2023. So moving on to our next item of business. Councilor Mendez, please, if you could. Item number 2023-023.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is old business. It's item number 2023-023. amend in the code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinance, Article 3, 240-39, by repealing and replacing the shopping center redevelopment overlay district. This is a public hearing, a roll call majority of two-thirds of the full council.
Second.
We're first and the second, and we have Director Jenkins planning in development here to begin our rationale.
Thank you, President Levesque, members of the council, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. This item is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to the shopping center redevelopment overlay district. This amendment is designed to encourage additional development and a mix of uses on the property around the Cape Cod Mall. Procedurally, I will note that the Planning Board held a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment in October 26th, voted by a vote of 6 to 1 to recommend the proposed zoning amendment to the council in the form presented to you this evening. And if President Levesque feels it's appropriate, I know we have some individuals from the Cape Cod Mall here, an attorney, Eliza Cox. I will yield to them for the remainder of the rationale. I know she has a presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you, Director Jenkins. I just want to welcome Attorney Eliza Cox and Tim Fox from Simon Malls. Welcome.
Super, thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the council. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish here in Hyannis on behalf of Mayflower Cape Cod LLC, which is the entity that owns the Cape Cod Mall. As President Levesque indicated, I'm also joined by Tim Fox of the Simon Group, who also comment as part of our brief presentation. What I thought I would do is sort of give a little overview of the proposed text changes to the SCROD as it exists right now. And then, obviously, if there's specific questions that the council has, we'd be happy to try and answer those as well. So just procedurally, as the council will recall, this had a first read in September. We had two hearings, as Director Jenkins mentioned in her comments before the Planning Board, and the Planning Board voted to recommend the amendments that are in your packet. And that brings us, obviously, to today. So just by way of background, the shopping center redevelopment overlay is currently contained in Section 24039 of the zoning ordinance. It was originally established in 1996 as a special overlay district to encourage the redevelopment and renovation of the Cape Cod Mall property, which consists of about 65 acres and has on it right now approximately 700,000 square feet of building area. And the graphic that's on the screen shows the outline of the shopping center redevelopment overlay district as it currently exists. And as was mentioned previously, we're not proposing any changes to the map with these amendments. The redevelopment overlay district right now authorizes within the SCROD retail shopping center uses. And we're also looking to make some dimensional changes, which I'll go over in a minute. But one of the principal drivers of these proposed amendments was to add some additional uses within the overlay district. And I'm actually going to turn the podium now over to Tim for a minute, and then I'll come back up to talk a little bit about the changing nature of this industry and why we think these amendments are important.
Thank you very much, Eliza, President Levesque, councillors. My name is Tim.
Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. My name is Tim Fox. I'm with Simon Property Group, Cape Cod Mall. It's a pleasure to be here. You know, this is a process that has been in the works for quite some time, for going on four-plus years. It started when we were kind of in the midst of the Sears redevelopment, which has kind of transformed the property from the former Sears building into the current Dick's Sporting Goods Target and some of the other shops. We've worked closely with Director Jenkins and her team. It's been a collaborative effort. It's been a priority for us to take the mall from kind of the past into the present. And that's a process that is time-consuming, it's capital-intensive, and it requires a lot of thought and effort. And, you know, this is a very important step in that process. Retail in general is changing. It's constantly changing, and really, over the last, you know, 10, 20 years, some massive changes, particularly with online retail. And then in the last three years, COVID has just kind of, you know, put those changes into overdrive. And it's forced us to, you know, look at the business and understand, how can we better serve our customers? And one of the ways is diversifying away from strict retail uses. You know, malls traditionally are retails, restaurants. You know, we see going forward that that's changing, and that's changing across the country. And this is, you know, not a unique circumstance, but it's an important change. And it will happen in steps. And like I said, this is a very important first step, which the principal modifications are to reduce the parking ratio, which, you know, right now is, it's an archaic piece of the code. I think anybody who's been to the mall would say that there's a vast sea of unused parking, and that's really not the highest and best use. And we think that we can do better, and this modification will enable that change. The other major change is additional uses. And this is kind of part of the growing trend of mixed use, kind of the diversification away from strict retail, like I mentioned. So those are some of the reasons that we're advocating for this update, and we look forward to answering any questions that you have. I'm going to hand it back to Eliza. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. So the next couple of slides provide sort of a high-level overview of the proposed amendments that are in your package with this article. So first, in terms of uses, as I mentioned, the amendments seek to add some additional uses that aren't either, that are either explicitly prohibited or not mentioned in the current zoning. And the new uses that are proposed are office, hotel, and multifamily dwellings. And presently, both hotel and multifamily dwellings are explicitly prohibited in the SCROD. We're looking to make those now allowed uses. In addition, the amendments also strike a currently allowed use, which is no longer needed, and that is, the current zoning allows a tire, battery, and auto accessory store. I think that was the old Sears Auto Store, which is no longer here, probably not the best use, given that the property is in the groundwater protection district. So, planning staff asked if we would consider striking that as an allowed use. We agreed, and that's in the draft that's before you. In addition, there's some changes to the building height. The retail use, the mall use itself, that height is not changing with these proposed amendments, but we did create a separate building height requirement for hotel and multifamily uses, the two proposed new uses. That would be the lesser of 55 feet or four stories. This is very similar, in fact, identical to the height that this council approved in the medical services overlay district for the proposed residential development there. Again, working with your planning staff, one of the requests, which is in the document, is that we incorporate an outdoor recreational requirement for hotels and multifamily. So there is some additional green space that's required surrounding those uses under the amendments. Similarly, the planning staff asked us to modernize some of the landscape requirements that are presently in the SCROD and to import some of the language that's in another section of the zoning bylaw, which is currently not required within the overlay. So we've also done that. There you'll see, and if you look at the red-line version, a whole section of additional landscaping requirements that aren't presently required as part of this modification. And finally, as Tim mentioned previously, another significant change is updating, and by updating, I mean decreasing, the required parking ratios to more reflect what the mall actually needs and open up some space for redevelopment on the site. In addition, we've also included a mechanism to further reduce that parking by special permit from the zoning board as part of the amendments. In addition, there's a whole new section on affordable housing that's proposed within the amendments. And that new section essentially requires that when a multifamily development is proposed, that at the time that development is proposed, there's a requirement that the development provide the greater of what's required under Chapter 9 of our Inclusionary Housing Code or 10% for individuals at 65% AMI and 3% of units restricted for individuals at 80% AMI. So I understand the town is in the process now of perhaps revisiting the requirements of Chapter 9 of the code. If that changes in the future to require more than the 13% of units restricted, a new development proposed at the time would be subject to that greater requirement under Chapter 9. I think this probably goes without saying, but it's important to reiterate this. The mall is a major player here in the Town of Barnstable. Its assessed valuation is $110 million. It's the largest private taxpayer in the Town of Barnstable, and it's nearly three times larger than the next largest taxpayer. It's also a major employer. There's over 1,000 jobs that are created by the mall and many food and beverage tenants that contribute to meals taxes. So this is my last slide, wrapping up. I know oftentimes when there are zoning changes, there are questions about impacts of what's being built. And I would just remind the council, who I know is savvy at dealing with zoning changes, that what we're seeking today is really an amendment to allow and lay the foundation for future redevelopment opportunities. When new projects are proposed, any impacts associated with those projects will have to undergo the normal course of permitting. And that's not proposed to be changed with the amendments that are before you. So I'm going to stop there. And again, I want to thank Councilor Mendez for his support of this, and also to the planning staff for working with my client and myself for several years now on bringing this before you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Cox. And this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the room first that is here and would like to comment or have any questions in regards to this item? Okay? Not seeing any. A directed point, do we have anybody via Zoom or remote that would like to participate?
There is no one via Zoom for this item.
Okay. All right, one last call. Not seeing any. I would close the public hearing and now open it up to council discussion, looking to my left. Are there any questions? Yes. Councilor Atzalas, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, would the, this change allow for expansion of the existing retail property, if you felt that that was needed at some point down the road?
I'm happy to respond.
Please.
The change in and of itself wouldn't necessarily, we could expand the existing mall as it exists today, but there would be a modification of the parking requirement. So in effect, we could expand the footprint and lose parking and still meet the requirement.
All right. Thank you.
Any follow-up?
Not right now.
Okay. Any other questions here on my left? Councilor Starr, please.
Thank you. Can I see the map with the outline of the SCROD, of the property?
Absolutely.
Oh, oh, sorry. Oh, thanks.
A little hard to see, but it's right here.
Is the, does the mall lease land on the south side?
Yes.
Is it a retention pond? There's the others.
Yeah, the mall leases land on both, I guess, largely on the south, but on both sides of the property, in fact.
Okay. So, but that's not part of the, part of this?
No, we're not proposing to modify the map at this time now.
And there are no other easements in and out?
I mean, there are existing easements, yes.
What was that? There was an old road, remember, that came down along the edge of that pond to Route 28? But that's not in play?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So my question is, if we're going to allow hotels, the real need in this town is housing. So I would like to see some kind of parity between, you know, if you build 10 hotel rooms, you can build 10, you know, units of residential housing, if that would be possible. I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know how to do that. So that's one idea. Oh, I speak more into the mic, okay. So I would like to see some kind of housing involved in this at some point. The other question that came up in the Planning Board meetings was, this outdoor recreational space was not very large, to be kind. So I don't, how big is the outdoor recreational space?
So that is contained in...
Is it in here somewhere?
Yes, it is in here. It's in subsection I, and it has to have a contiguous space containing a minimum width of 15 feet and a minimum tree canopy of at least 10%.
So width of 15 feet, is there a length?
There's no specified length in here. But, I mean, I will say that, you know, as part of the permitting, when a project is proposed, there will have to be, most likely, Cape Cod Commission involvement and Town of Barnstable zoning permitting. So these are the types of details that get reviewed and discussed in the normal course as a project is permitted.
Okay. I guess.
Any follow-up, councilor?
Is there any chance, if you were going to expand any retail, that you could put housing above retail? Or is that would still be connected to the main building?
That's certainly a possibility. I mean, it's not something that we've looked at for anything in, you know, the near term, but that is certainly a possibility, and, you know, that's, we have property across the country that exists in that manner.
Yes, it does do that, okay. Thank you. I guess I'm done. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilor Starr. Anybody comments? Councilor Lutke?
Yes, I for one really applaud this initiative. I think it's amazing, and I hope you actively solicit and maybe the Town of Barnstable works with them to get multifamily housing. If you drive off Cape and Uprute 3, you turn off at the Kingston Collection. I'm hearing, I'm seeing some nods here. The Kingston Collection was kind of destroyed by that other mall that's like a mile and a half away, the one that's the outdoor kind of venue. But if you notice, again, we talked about the Sears being destroyed here, that they tore down the Sears, and I think it's a 200-and-odd housing developer. If anyone hasn't seen it, it's quite remarkable. You drive into the Kingston Collection, and there is this huge apartment complex where the Sears used to be. And it certainly takes advantage of the parking. If you go to that Kingston Collection, about the same, probably vintage, maybe a little younger than our mall, was with that archaic parking layout. And there's still so much parking there, even with this enormous apartment building. And then you go a little further down Route 3, and you go to Hanover Crossing. And that one is becoming very vibrant. That was almost a scary place. I mean, it was so derelict, that Hanover Mall. And now it's just amazing what they're doing. It kind of looks like a Derby Street, kind of what I've thought, you know, we're thinking about for Kmart. And their housing isn't like the one at Kingston, where there's this giant one. It's more the, you know, the smaller ones towards the back, but still equally successful and great models. So I really hope this comes to fruition. One thing I had mentioned to some people was, you know, I wish we could go higher, maybe a 15%, maybe 5% on the 85%. Just down the road on 28, we see the residences at 850. Now, they managed 18%, and that's built. And they did it, and they did it with, we talked about earlier here, about a lot of cooperation. There was a lot of cooperation, CPA funds, other things, to make that happen. They've even got solar panels on the roof. So that's really a huge success, that they got to the 18%. And I know we're working on the housing production plan, so I'm glad you have that clause in there that you could go higher, because 850 residences demonstrates that it can be done. And again, what Gordon was saying, I hope we are pursuing housing, because it's a terrific place. The only one thing I would hesitate about is, you know, that's where the fair sets up when it comes to town, and that's where Eversource stages. So it's something to really consider. I mean, that's important to consider, you know, what other areas are available. But in large, I mean, really, great job. Great job between the staff and the representatives to make this happen.
Thank you, Councilor Lutke. Councilor Mendez, please.
Yes, thank you, President Levesque. I agree with both Councilor Lutke and Councilor Starr. We do need housing, but we also need a hotel that's modern. I mean, come on, we're driven by tourism. And that's also a need, because you don't know how many times I hear from friends of mine who come down here, the hotels smell. They're old, they don't have modern services. I mean, that's fine for some people, but for a lot of people, it's not. So we have to also keep our eye on, as we're progressing with housing, we also have to modernize our hotel industry, because we're also losing out on tourism dollars because of that. So yes, ideally, housing, but I wouldn't mind a hotel either, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Councilor Mendez. Any other council comment, questions? Councilor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. I support the amendment, and I suppose one of the biggest reasons is because, as it stands right now, multifamily housing, hotel, none of those things are even an option there or office space. And the mall is becoming, no offense, Mr. Fox, slightly depressing, as you see, particularly over COVID, the amount of businesses that went out and moved out of the mall. So, I mean, it's definitely, that property is in need of some invigoration. The frontage on 28 has always been parking, and frankly, it's not very appealing. So I for one am going to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shaughnessy. Vice President Schnapp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all for converting asphalt that is unused into more purposeful uses. And I think housing, obviously, is definitely one I favor the most, but industry hotel would also be great. I just have some kind of detailed questions. I was happy to see that our amendment would modernize the landscaping. Is our passage of this amendment going to coincide with that improvement, or do we have to wait for some development to be proposed before that landscaping occurs?
It's the latter. So as redevelopment happens, that area that's being redeveloped will be subject to, if this passes, the new landscape requirements.
Okay, great. And the other question I had is, you know, the parking is actually fairly tight on the 28 side. Is there, is it the permitting process itself that will discuss what can go where when this is passed?
It's 8:45 p.m.
Okay.
That's correct. Assuming this passes and a new project is proposed, obviously, anything would have to meet the dimensional requirements, and then we would go through the permitting process to, you know, cite it exactly and go through that permitting. But yes, that's right, as a project comes forward.
Would there be ever any time that you would put in layered parking, in any case?
Can you clarify, do you mean structured parking?
Yes.
That's a possibility, but I would say that it's highly unlikely, just due to the cost. It's unlikely. I'm not ruling it out. And I think perhaps some of the other uses which would be allowed, assuming the amendment is approved, would make the possibility of structured parking more likely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnapp. Any other questions, comments? Back to Councilor Atzalas.
So assuming that any future development would be, whether it's hotels or housing, would be on the south side of, the south side over by Route 28, correct? So would the main access road continue to be that back entrance by the TD Bank? Or would there be the possibility that there'd be additional curb cuts needed? Because my concern there is if additional curb cuts are needed to access these potential new developments, now you have, you know, within that intersection, you're going to have a very tight area for cars to come in and out. So what's the tentative plan, if any, for access in and out of any new development on that property?
So, you know, we're not proposing a project tonight, but I can say that, you know, the portion of the property that we have looked at as kind of the next logical area of development would be the side on 28. And there wouldn't be any proposed modifications to the curb cut as we see it currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Atzalas. Councilor Starr?
Thank you. To follow up, maybe this is for Ms. Jenkins, but that parking lot on the south side connects to the Trader Joe's Christmas tree shop, and if we lose that access, that's a real minus, because then people have to go around the rotary to get to those places. So I don't know, is there a process whereby if they propose something in the south side, some kind of traffic mediation or something would happen? I assume that's a yes, but...
So I'll take a shot at it. The zoning doesn't specifically speak to interconnections between properties, but you're right that that does exist. It's very likely that any development planned for this area would trigger review by the Cape Cod Commission. And certainly, one of the priorities under the regional policy plan is keeping access controlled and promoting shared access on our roadway. So I imagine that would be a significant point of discussion in a regulatory review process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Starr. Any more questions? Okay, thank you for being with us, really appreciate it. So this is the end of council discussion. I would, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Roll call.
Yep, it's a roll call, two-thirds majority. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councillors, Atzalas?
Yes.
Clark? Yes. Huzek?
Yes.
I didn't either. Personally, I didn't either.
Oh, boy. Stepping in. Do we have a motion pending? I'm not sure that I heard it, unless it's been carried over since September. But would it be helpful to, for someone to move? But would it be helpful to, for someone to move as presented and put that on the record? Will the second?
Sure.
Thank you.
I believe it was read into the record, but if we could move this item as presented and entertain a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, majority vote, please.
Thank you. Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Rapgrassetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
It passes.
Excellent. And just to correct myself, it's roll call, two-thirds majority again. So that does pass. Thank you. And thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your investments in our town.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item of business, Councilor Steinheilber, please. 2023-058.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2022-2023-058. Appropriation order in the amount of $45,000 for the Gulf Enterprise Fund for the purpose of funding the acquisition of a utility tractor for the Gulf Maintenance Operations. As written, this is a public hearing.
Second.
We have first and a second. We have Assistant Director of Community Services, Christopher Gennella, with us this evening for the rationale.
Yes, good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Town Council. Just a background, we all know the supply chain issues that we're all facing. Gulf is no different. Right now, we're looking at a 14-month lead time after we sign a purchase agreement to get a piece of equipment. This piece of equipment is specific that we use for cultural practices, and it's timing specific. So if we order now with approval, we're looking at next, the spring of 2024, to potentially get this piece of equipment and operational. The number of golf rounds, as we all know, has dramatically increased at both facilities, causing compaction, requiring additional cultural practices to relieve the compaction and create more favorable growing conditions. We have also implemented additional maintenance techniques, including slicing, aeravating. We're just trying to get the area opened up and get more viable growing medium for turf to succeed. This is also an integral part of our environmental, environmentally sustainable land management plan. And we've experienced, as we all know, extreme drought conditions. And we follow the letter of the law with those restrictions. And now we need to alleviate that compaction and do what's right so we can have a viable seat bed and give the customers and the residents in town of Barnstable the conditions that they've grown to expect from the wonderful job that our staff does with golf. The impact, fiscal impact, the enterprise has a surplus I'm proud to report. It's over $2.3 million. It was certified by the Department of Revenue. And we'd like to utilize the $45,000 out of that reserve to purchase this equipment with your approval. And with that, if there's any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
First, there's a public hearing, and I would ask if there's anybody here that has any, that wants to participate in public comment. Not seeing any, do we have anybody that would like to participate remotely?
There is no public comment on Zoom.
Okay, I would close the public comment portion of this hearing and open up to council discussion. Also like to recognize Director of Golf Operations, Jesse Sekman, with us. Thank you for being with us. Good to see you. Any other council discussion regards to this item? Okay, not seeing any? I appreciate you being with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And I would entertain a motion to move forward for a vote.
Second.
First and a second, and a roll call, roll call, please.
Councilors. Clark.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Rapgrassetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us. Moving on to our next item of new business. Councilor Shaughnessy, please, if you could. 2023-061.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is old business, public hearing, majority of the full council. Item number 2023-061. Appropriation order in the amount of $3,811,500 for the fiscal year 2023 Airport Enterprise Fund operating expense budget for the purpose of purchasing aviation jet fuel for resale.
Second.
We have first and a second, and we have Director Katie Service with us for the rationale, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. Once again, I am here to talk about our operating budget and to increase the operating budget to account for our increase in fuel sales that we've had, as well as the increase in the dollar amount and cost of fuel over the past couple of months. So just to give you a brief summary, the airport is requesting this increase for jet fuel purchases. The dollar amount that we budgeted for jet fuel has almost doubled from when we identified what were our needs would be in our budget. By the end of our first quarter of this fiscal year, the airport actually surpassed the fuel that we budgeted for fiscal year 2023 for purchases. The budget anticipated was for one point, just over 1.2 million gallons of jet fuel sold at the airport. The rate that we put into our budget was $2.80 per gallon. That's the cost, not the retail cost. That would bring us to about 3.5 million that we needed in the budget. We've already surpassed that $3.5 million in our budget. We've purchased so far, when I put these slides together, 823,000 gallons for the season. We have sold over 920,000 gallons so far. The issue really isn't the amount of jet fuel that we're selling. Yes, we have been selling more. As COVID happened, a lot of our customers started to utilize private aircraft for their services more readily. We're starting to see a normalization of that. We're still selling more than we have in the past five years, but we're starting to see that scale tip a little bit and come back to our normal average rates. Right now, we're spending about $4.30 per gallon for our purchases for fuel. And again, we anticipated $2.80 in our budget. I've included this table for you in the rationale, but overall, the budget, we started to look at what do we typically buy between now and the end of the fiscal year to identify how many average loads that we would need at the airport to satisfy what our needs might be for the budget for the remainder of the year. We did a quick calculation of what that would look like. We raised the average cost to $5 in case we see some more increases to what our purchases are. Right now, a load of fuel is about $50,000 per load. As you can see on the graph, from November and December, our typical loads that we purchase, about 10 loads each month. Then we go through a lull for January through April, and then we pick back up again, May, June, and July, obviously being our busy season. So we accounted for the additional need for 75 loads plus some contingencies in there with two additional loads. That brings us to three point, just over 3.8 million needed for our budget. Just to, let me go back to this one side. The cost of fuel gets reimbursed into our revenues. We will sell the fuel back out, obviously at an increased rate. This is the cost of fuel to us, what it costs us for transporting and getting the fuel to the airport. And then we transition that over to our customers, obviously, so that the airport is making some money. So we'll put this back into our reserves. Any questions or comments?
Before we do that, this is also a public hearing. Does anybody here like to participate in public comment? Not seeing any, do we have anybody that would like to participate remotely?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, I would close the public hearing then, and I see Councilor Neary's hand up. Would you like to start us off with council discussion?
Thank you, President Levesque, and thank you, Director Service. Just a couple of questions. Curious what the storage capacity is on the grounds for fuel.
Sure. So we have 60,000 gallons that we can store on the ground, plus we have three mobile units where we can also store fuel. We're looking into purchasing and installing one more 20,000-gallon tank on our existing farm.
Thank you. And then the next question would be with the cost of fuel so volatile, do you have, is it a, you can't really do a first-in, first-out type of a formula. So it's average cost basis times X factor would be the markup on that when you're selling it?
It is. So we get new rates every week, so we have to fluctuate what we're selling every week and what our dollar amount is going to be to our consumers. And we do that every single week. So it really just happens to have, to be a deciding factor of what that dollar amount is week by week. We can look at projections, which is what we did for this budget. Nobody anticipated the fuel to increase as much as it has. But, you know, it is a week-by-week, you know, discussion about what we're going to charge to, in order to get our revenues at the airport.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion looking to my left? Anybody else looking to my right? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this point in time, not seeing any other council discussion, I would entertain a motion to move forward with voting on this item.
Second.
Thank you. And with that, roll call, majority vote, please.
Councilors. Cusack.
Yes.
Rapgrassetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Lutke.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinheilber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
That's 12 yes.
Thank you. For the next item, appointments are typically two reads. However, because we need to fill some vacancies on one of the committees, in order for that committee to have quorum, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend Town Council Rules 12 and 15 to allow the Town Council to vote on item 2023-063 tonight.
So moved.
Second.
We got a first and a second. And I'm sorry, do we need a roll call on this?
No.
Okay. So all those in favor signify your approval by saying, raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, not seeing any. Councilor Shaughnessy, please, if you could. Item number 2023-063.
Certainly, President Levesque. This is new business being voted on this evening. This is item number 2023-063. Appointments to a board, committee, or commission. Resolve that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member Board Committee Commission. The Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee, Jackie Johnson as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024, and Neil Kleinfeld as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. The Disability Commission, Lori Gillan as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2024. Hyannis Main Street Waterfront Historic District Commission, Laura Cronin as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Licensing Authority, Max Mitrakostas as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Recreation Commission, Alyssa Chase as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2025. Zoning Board of Appeals, Erin Webb from associate member to a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2023, as read.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Excellent. Not seeing any? I believe we can just take a vote. So if we could signify your approval by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes. Councilor Rapgrassetti, please, if you could, on the next item. Item number 2023-064.
This is new business, refer to a public hearing on 12/15/2022. Item 2023-064. Appropriation order in the amount of $1,337,890 for the purpose of funding restoration work to the Zion Union Historic Museum and Original Chapel at 296 North Street, Hyannis Mass., as read.
Second.
We have first and a second, referring to a public hearing. Those who are approval, please, I'm sorry, recognize your approval by raising your hand and signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that moves forward. Next item of business, we have item number 2023-065. Councilor Clark, please, if you could read that into the record.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is Agenda Item 2023-065. Authorization to expand a fiscal year 2023 Recycling Dividends Program grant in the amount of $11,700 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the purpose of enhancing the town's waste reduction programs.
A first and a second, and we have Town Manager Mark Els with us for the rationale.
Thank you. I don't often get to do public works appropriate.
Bringing it back.
He said, I'll give you an easy one, Mark. I said, thank you, Dan. Mark Els, Town Manager. The town's been awarded $11,700 grant from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection under the Recycling Dividends Program. The grant award was made because of the specific programs and policies the town has implemented to maximize reuse, recycling, and waste reduction. The acceptance of this grant will allow the Solid Waste Division in the town to enhance its waste reduction programs through the acquisition of recycling containers, recycling carts, and recycling bins, waste reduction, and/or recycling outreach and educational materials and other related expenses authorized in the Recycling Dividends Program contract. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you for the rationale. Any questions from councilors? It's always good to get grants.
I have a question.
Yeah, Council Clark, please.
Would this grant include the provision of, what do I want to say? Composting bins for the public?
I'd have to check. It'd probably be an eligible expense, but I don't know how far we could go with that. We have historically done that. Couple of times we've done it.
I'm a big fan of that. But I know that with people, since COVID, with people engaging more in family gardens...
I'll talk to Director Santos. Yep. Even if this doesn't, we can look into providing that again. Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Cannot see, seeing any, if you could show your approval by raising your hand and signify by saying aye? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our last item of business, Councilor Starr, please, if you could help us out.
This is number 2023-066. Order waiving fees of construction work for the Barnstable Fire District for a new fire district water treatment plant off Breed's Hill Road to treat the district's wells, number two and five.
Second.
We have a first and a second, referring to a public hearing, a next meeting. Please show your approval by raising your hand, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Passes. And at this point, having finished the orders of the day, I move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I skipped that part, didn't I? Thank you. I'm rushing it. Now I'm handing this back to our regular scheduled program, handing the meeting over to Town Clerk Ann Quirk for nominations, please.
Thank you so much.
Just trying to get out of here before 9:30.
This evening, we're going to have the nominations from the floor for the Office of President and Vice President of the Council. For those of you who haven't been here for this before, we start with the Office of President. I'm asking for a motion to nominate and a second. Discussions and speeches are not appropriate tonight. They will happen next meeting when we will have the actual vote. So the floor is open. Does anyone have a nomination? Councilor Schnep?
Yes. Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Matthew Levesque for a third term as President of the Barnstable Town Council.
Second. Okay, excellent. I'm still writing, hang on. Yes, Councilor Neary.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would like to make a motion to nominate Jennifer Cullum, Precinct 13, for Vice President.
Are we done with the President's nomination? Are we done with the president's nominations? We do, we finish with one before we go to the next, okay? Are we done with president's nominations? Okay. All right, jump right in. Okay, so now it's for Jen Cullen.
I'll second.
And that was Mr. Attles.
Yes.
Okay. It was quick today. Thank you very much. We have, we have a slate for next meeting for the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Clerk Ann Quirk. If you'd like this deja vu, I move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and Town Council. Specifically, the council will discuss a lawsuit filed against the town by TGA Clean Energy LLC regarding claims relating to the solar energy provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. The council will not return to public session after this executive session.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and Town Clerk Ann Quirk for the roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilors. Rapgrassetti.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.